David.
Please raise your right hand.
Can I just say?
Raise your right hand. Do you sound like you're trying to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys?
I do.
Please state and spell your name slowly for the record.
It's David Hessler, H-E-S-L-E-R.
Thank you. You may have a seat.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, I've submitted my report already, as I mentioned, and I just want to very briefly touch on the salient points in the report to the town. Two of them have to do with the town noise ordinance, and the third one is a technical issue. We'll talk about that at the end. On the town ordinance, it limits the noise from a facility to 43 dva a night and 53 dva per day. Now, because this plant is going to run around the clock at times, 43 is the effective limit of noise on a facility by the town ordinance. Now, that number is actually unusually demanding. It's below most other jurisdictions overall noise levels. Typically, 45 is not as low as any state or local government limits ones. So, 43 is low and demanding, and, in my opinion, adequately protective of the community. It's a good number. It's unusual. In most instances, the ordinance level will be some high number, and the plant really needs to be designed to lower than or to lower than disturbance. In this case, two are kind of coincident. 43 is a good number, a design number. Even if there were no ordinance, that would be a good number to design this plant to. And that applies that the all houses around there, technically, the plant would need to be designed to satisfy that. Nearest houses on all the intro road.
Can you speak into the microphone just a little?
Just to the east. I didn't hear the beginning of that. Anyway, the number 43, 43 dva level, I think is a good one. Now, to put it in context, in our work over the past three decades, what we found is that any type of facility, a power plant, even wind turbines, if the level is 40 dva less, people are bothered by it. It's so quiet, absolute terms, that people just aren't too worried about it. And 43 is not appreciably allowed in here. So, I think it's a good level. Now, the second part of the ordinance is that the, that there's also limits on the frequency spectrum called octavant limits. So, in effect, the ordinance has 10 limits, nine across the frequency spectrum, and that is overall 43 limits. Now, the octavant limits in there are, you know, the 43 is usually low, but the octavant limits are extremely low. They're way below the norm for regulatory ordinances expressed in octavants. And it's particularly conorous in lower frequencies. The ordinance limits are so low that the background levels out there, and that is probably in violation. And that's even in compressor stations that are not operating. So, they're unusually low and unnecessarily low. So, what I'm suggesting is that, first of all, Invenergy has petitioned for waiver on that, and I think that's a legitimate request, and there's no need to make a specific.
Are you sure on? Or who?
Yeah.
No, it's true. If the plant met them, it wouldn't sound any quieter than if it did. It's a little bit difficult to explain, but the low frequencies, you don't hear the low frequencies. There's no reason for the plant to get, and it's totally impractical anyway. The limits are equivalent to a zoning ordinance that says you can't build a house higher than 4 feet. You know, it just precludes anything, and there's no reason. As long as the 43s are there, the sound level will be, I believe, satisfactory. So, now, the last step is startup noise, transit noise. Now, most people think that my plant is running at full load, that is when the noise is maximum. That is not the case for a fine set of noise. Maximum noise occurs during startup. It's usually 5:00 in the morning. When shut down, usually 11:00 at night. But you don't want to be noticing quite all of the barriers much more than during normal operation. So, the thing here, important, is that the facility be designed to maintain that 43 during all operating loads. That's very important for this plant because it uses air-cooled condensers, and they're particularly prone to very high levels of startup noise. So, I've been highlighting and underlining that it's very important that the plant maintain that level during startup, and I think the point has gotten through. Invenergy has commissioned a special modeling study to examine it, examine startup noise. They've done a good job on that. A little bit leery about some of the assumptions in the model, but importantly, they have committed to maintain 43 at all times. And they've admitted or said that the EDC contractor that's building the plant is going to have to guarantee that the plant maintains 43. Now, that's very important because these EDC contractors taking these guarantees bear very seriously, and will do whatever needs doing to meet it. It's going to be expensive, it's going to be difficult, but we have it in writing, and it will be sore nail, and uncomfortable for us.
Can you detail some of the things that they would need to do if they don't need that?
The main issue is the steam turbine bypass during startup. It's where all the steam production goes directly to the condenser relevant through the steam turbine. And so, extremely high-pressure steam gets ejected into this vacuum in this large duct, and it's essentially an explosive process, very explosive. So, what is typically done, and what is going to be done here, is they're going to use low-noise valves, which will help. And if I were designing this plant, I would go beyond that and include other measures like very heavy lagging on the duct. I wouldn't rely on the guarantees from the valve manufacturer.
They know.
Yeah, there's a lot of things that could be done, including, and it's just a thought, is to extend the turbine building to completely close this duct so that it's inside the building. I think that'd be a wise step, because you can't make it too far, because the plant during normal operation is going to be designed to do 43. So, there's no room for additional noise during startup. Startup has to be negligible, so you can't really overkill it. So, I would take quite a few redundant precautions to try to get that under control, but I think it can be done. And I think that completes the summary.
Thank you. Gentlemen? Good evening, Mr. Hessler. Thank you for coming. Most of us here, including myself, are really schooled in, most of us here, including myself, are as schooled as you, you know. However, I've done a lot of reading the last few days and a few things, and found out that dva is, you know, an A-weighted noise system. And I was wondering if you could explain to me the difference between, let's say, 43 dva and 44 dva? The difference in sound? Is that audible, something that you hear?
No, that wouldn't be audible. In general, the difference has to be more than about 5 dva before you're able to tell that the sound is different. So, the difference in 1 dva is totally imperceptible. 3 dva is maybe barely perceptible, and then fine. Most people would say, yeah, it's starting to get a little bit louder, or it's starting to change. But then it rapidly increases. It's exponential. So, at 10 dva difference, all you hear is the sound. It's completely different.
I was under the understanding that every increase in numbers, 10 times the sound. Is that true?
Yeah, yeah. It's a logarithmic scale, so.
So, let's say from 40 to 50 dvas to make it more easy to calculate. How many, how much louder in time is it? Is it 50 more? Is it 1,000 more?
No, the difference between 40, 50, 10 dva difference, it would sound twice as loud.
Which is extremely significant.
Yeah, yeah. 10 dva difference is huge, but anything from 0 to 5 is very, very subtle, and you might not even notice it.
So, if they're designing this plant to meet the maximum of 43 dva, the last time they're doing here, correct me if I'm wrong, but at startup and shutdown, you're saying that that dva would be around 84?
Well, 43 is at the nearest thousands, thousands of feet away.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, the 43 is at the nearest houses, thousands of feet away from the plant, whereas in the plant, next to typical equipment, the sound level might be about 85 or more.
And in your report, you say, what you just mentioned about the valves, that the manufacturer could create a valve that could do that, and you, that's something I think we both like to see. The likelihood of that happening, a startup and shutdown, to be only 43 dva, in your estimation, is that a probability?
I think it can't be done, but I will take.
Has it been done ever?
At every plant with an air-cooled condenser that I've ever been to, they've always been loud, even if low-noise valves are used. That's why I say I would use redundant measures like enclosing the duct, lagging the duct, everything possible that you can throw at it, because there's no rope for any of those things.
Have you ever actually taken dva calculations from different sites in that area?
Many sites, yeah. I've been on a JLG lift going along these ducts, measuring, you know, one foot away the whole length, at many plants.
But I mean more specifically, the compressor station, let's say, up in Alabama. Have you taken any readings from that?
No.
I think there'd be a lot of testimony tonight that it can be very loud, and I do realize it's just not, you know, taking dvas with the compressor station and then Clear Energy Power Plant, we don't add them together, okay, because it's a different system of measuring, algorithm, these things. But nevertheless, there is an addition to that by the noise. Am I correct?
Yeah, well, the way the situation is, the compressor station noise, from the data I've seen, ranges from 41 to over 50, depending on, I guess, what equipment's running at the time. What that means is if a new plant comes in at 43, it's heavy level 43, most of the time, the compressor station is completely covered up, and it'll sound exactly the same at the houses.
Well, if the power plant meets the 43 dva, and the compressor plant, and I believe, because it's federally licensed, is 55 dva, I may be wrong on that, I think they can go up to 55 dva. So, let's just say that also at the max of 55 plus 43 would be what?
55.
So, the noise coming out of there at the nearest residence will actually be 55, which is twice as much noise as the 43, or beyond twice as much.
Yeah, and the sound level would be completely dominated by the compressor station, let's say, if it's doing 55.
Well, what I'm trying to do is get a whole picture. You know, you know, the residents are concerned about noise, and I, you know, I just, I want to look at everything to find out, is how much noise is going to be coming through these people's windows late at night?
Right, right, exactly.
The difference between 43 and 55 is twice as much noise that's loud.
Yeah, but that's entirely due to the compressor station, and the power plant would just be lost in the background. It's not, if it's not going, that would be any worse. What's needed is for the compressor station to be taken there. See, the 43 would not be contributing. It would be measured the same level out there whether the new plant is on or off.
Well, if the, you were just saying, if the compressor plant is 55, the 43 would be contributing, would be in addition to it?
No, it would not be added to it. The total level would still be 55, and you wouldn't hear the new plant at all.
So, then, the power plant could be running at 55, and no one would notice it, would you tell them?
If the compressor station, if the compressor station were running 55, and the new plant came on, there would be no change. The 43 plus 55 equals 55, in the strange logarithmic arithmetic.
Say that. Do this one more time, so I understand. That's okay. If we have 55 dva plus 43 dva, the noise would be?
55, 55, yeah. Yeah, any level that's about 10 below another level is completely non-contributing. It's not doing anything. It's like whispering in the presence of a barbed wire. It's all yours, a barbed wire.
Let's talk about the octavants. You said that the frequency in the end, teaching you something. The octavants, if they're so low that we wouldn't be hearing them, why are we asking for a leak?
Yeah. There's no reason for, like, the new plant's sound level to meet those octavants. First of all, it seems technically impossible, and even if we met them, it wouldn't sound any quieter, it'd be no benefit to the community, as long as the total level is 43, that's really all that counts. That's what you hear. An A-weighted level is audible sound to hear, it's better than some level going up rather than octavian.
Then why, I mean, if you're not ordinance, it appears to me that, you know, you're trying to pick away at the ordinance as being something wrong with our ordinance versus there's something wrong with the sound. I mean, if they're, if we're calling for an octavian frequency, tell me how you're going to meet that, or if you can't, or can you meet that?
No, it's the low-frequency bands, 31, 125, hers, the limits on the end of the ordinance are so low that I think, like I mentioned, I think the background level is higher.
So, I understand, but the background, background noise is crickets. You got a question, too?
Thank you, sir. The gentleman was hired by the town and has asked, you've asked several questions, and he has answered them. He has given his thoughts as to what they are. So, in the interest of other members also asking questions, because that's from the other side.
But they're totally different than the last time you talked.
Because I wanted to be able to have others, right? So, I apologize, I didn't mean to cut you off, but we could debate the gentleman for a long time. His opinion is his opinion, so that's why.
Opinion today, different than last time.
Thank you, sir.
Maybe not that.
Good evening. I just have a couple of quick questions. The executive summary report indicated that the startup and shutdown would be 10 to 30 minutes. You reported that it's more likely to be 40 minutes to 2 hours. Where is that discrepancy coming from? Why is there such a large discrepancy?
The 40 minutes to 2 hours is just what I've seen being in dozens of these plants over time.
Okay, so I'll need to ask them why they feel that the startup would be 10 to 30 minutes? Have you ever seen a startup of 10 to 30 minutes?
And if that's what it said, 30 minutes is too short, and there's no idea.
Another lie.
So, typical starting, typical startup or shutdown at plants are 30 minutes. I just want to be clear.
Yes.
So, I understand that they're talking about using these bypass, oh, sorry, these bypass valves are going to be indoors. The plan of using these low-noise valves, steam charge dampers, silencers on the vents. You just testified that you don't feel those are adequate resources to keep the noise levels down?
Yeah, the low-noise valves, those disc stack valves are more or less standard practice these days, but they don't completely eliminate the noise. It's not real quiet. I've never seen one actually down at the levels that have been assumed in the analysis that was done. So, I'm leery of that, and I would not trust those numbers and enclose the duct, or at least put a boost of a lagging in the duct, if nothing else, just in a caution. I think that's definitely what we need.
Have you seen that in other locations, where they can close the duct or where they line it up?
Yeah, yeah. Back in the early days, they didn't use low-noise valves, so nobody really knew about this. And at those plants, bypass noise was absolutely tremendous. I think I mentioned briefly the last time, the first plant that I saw this at was in England, and they didn't have low-noise valves, and the plant started up, and to everyone's surprise, it was tremendously noisy. And they had to scramble for a solution, and brought in truckloads and truckloads of hay bales, and buried the entire duct in a huge wall of hay bales, because people in the village a kilometer away were up in arms to write this up. So, the next plant that I worked on for the same company, also in England, he said, all right, well, this time, we're going to do it right. We're not going to make this mistake. We're going to use low-noise valves, we're going to build an enclosure over the first half of the steam duct as a precaution. We got a guarantee from the valve manufacturer that it was going to be 78 dva outside the duct. Those numbers are similar to what was given in the recent analysis here. The plant started up, there was 100 dva outside the duct, and this was, with every good intention, low-noise valves, everything that we could do, it was still loud. And so, the enclosure that I had recommended to put halfway down, the duct had to be extended all the rest of the way, and the rest of the system had to be ghostly lagged, and at huge expense. So, and I haven't seen one successfully plowed it down since then. Every other one's really noisy, too.
Then why is it your opinion that they would be able to maintain the 43 dva?
Because it's been guaranteed, and, you know, the EDC contractor will not just ban it on, they'll have to make it work, or else they'll be subject to liquidated damages. And so, they will have to design with extreme diligence to enclose the thing.
I'll just have one more question. Is there a way of providing, you know, some kind of model test that, I mean, it's never been done or hasn't been done, or is there a way to model test that, you know, that construction that would allow us to see whether we need that?
Well, the only way I would believe that the valves are going to work as promised would be to witness it at another installation. Now, I'm never saying that's working.
This is a technical investigation. I just want one, I mean, it's slightly redundant, but I just want one definitive question. Now, this is based on your experience, your knowledge, your being in the field. Is this plant, in your opinion, the type of plant that has the capabilities of maintaining this decibel level consistently? Yes or no?
I think it can't be done, but appropriate attention has to be made during the design phase. It can't be just glossed over and considered a potential retrofit and lesser.
All right, but I understand, but based on what you've seen in your experiences, do you see that happening consistently, without extraordinary measures having to be taken place?
Yes or no?
Yes or no?
I, I think it's going to be very subtle.
Give me one second, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, please, the gentleman is trying to give you an answer. The gentleman has been hired by the town to give you an answer. Even though you may not agree with what he has to say, and you may not believe what the applicant is telling you, he's trying to give you an answer, so please, allow him to do so. Continue. Continue, sir.
Yes, yes, I think it can't be done.
No, that's not my question. My question was, in your experience with these plants, have you seen it be consistently maintained?
No, never seen an ACC.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else have any questions? Gentlemen?
Mr. Hessler, the first question I have is, did the hay bale work? Not really.
Have you seen any plans for this facility yet?
I've seen the site plan, I haven't seen the detail of the...
That's about the only thing we've seen. We've seen a couple of oddus roof dishers here, and it seems like what we're talking about is not incorporated anywhere that we've seen.
Yeah, that's not unusual. At this stage, those things have the detail.
Right, so everything right now is perfectly conceptual, that's it?
Yeah, which is good, because now there's time to design it, to...
What would be the possibility of, say, growing the entire facility or the high noise making facility, using earth, earth and ruins to surround the area, cut back on noise?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Just mounting it. Along with the sound reducing things you've mentioned so far, I think the valves and all, what would be the chance of just surrounding it, the high noise making areas with earth to help down the sound, instead of hay bales?
Well, that goes to what I was alluding to before. I think it would be a good idea here, and I'm not trying to dictate the design, but I think what I would think about is bringing the turbine building out so that it encloses this whole duct manifold and keeps it in the building. I think that'd be very effective. Thank you.
One last question. If you did put an oven bronze, I would suggest, it would simply deflect, if my physics are correct, it would deflect the sound up, so it wouldn't really mitigate it, it would just send it a different direction, correct?
It wouldn't deflect it anywhere, but it wouldn't block it very efficiently. It would just go over the top, be a little bit of a reduction, even if it was a heat device.
No, not worth doing.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Yes.
If the board is done, I think Benji should have the opportunity to question Mr. Hessler. And before we begin that process, I do have a legal suggestion for the board with regards to this issue. When the board issues its advisory opinion, the board could make a strong suggestion to the energy facility site board that a condition be placed on the operating permit of the plant, and a continuing condition that it must at all times of operation meet 43 DVA. The EFSP under the law has very strong enforcement powers, and if they don't meet that 43 DVA, the EFSP can take very strict action against them. So I would strongly suggest that board, in its deliberations, if it chooses to issue an advisory, make the advisory a condition on that continuing obligation.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hessler, we have one more question here, and I also have one ahead of time.
While we're at it, I was going to suggest that the board, along the lines of what Michael mentioned here, perhaps consider that Mr. Hessler, again, as a condition, be included in both the design and the construction of the facility to make sure that it's not a problem.
Mr. Hessler, you were, in your testimony, you listed that there are some active measures that they can take to mitigate this, and I believe you said they tend to be very expensive, but there are some active things that you would suggest. Could you make some of the, you said, enclose the building? Is that the only, or the main?
Yeah, the principal thing, I think, would be to extend the turbine building so that it closes the ACC steam duct horizontal portion and some of the risers. Now, the ACC is generally bigger than the building, so any parts of the distribution manifold that are outside, I would heavily lag with soundproof lagging on there. Use best available low noise valves. And then there's other things that are going on that also need attention. There's a drain tank near the steam turbine that it's normally ducted into the steam duct, and that's a real problem, but here, it's going to be vented, which is much, much better now. But that vent will require a very large silencer to take care of that, but that's the best way of doing it. And then another aspect of this is that there's an air ejector that creates a vacuum inside the denser. There's two ways of doing that. There's a real noisy way, and a quiet one. They're doing a quiet one here, using vacuum pumps, which are not that noisy at all. The other way, there's no way of continuing the other method. It's a moot point, because they're not doing that.
What kind of material will be made up?
Material.
Venting the...
Well, talking about this, this drain tank is, uses a prefabricated silencer. But you're talking about the lagging on the duct. Yeah, it's a combination of fiberglass and a mass-loaded vinyl material, which is a linen substitute, probably several layers of that.
I have one last question, if you may, Mr. Hessler. The DVA noise is at the, is measured at the closest residence, which I believe is on Walnut Lake Road. I remember years ago, I live up in the woods, a lot of trees around me, and one night I could hear music playing, and I wanted to join this party. So I searched and searched and searched, wondered what the clock and I knew this was. Come to find out, it was over on Route 44, over a mile and a half away. And my point is this, just like the khatash, you know, khatash is made out of wood, because it'll amplify the noise, it's like someone to a drum. Will the forest actually amplify the noise or carry that same DVA further than it would, say, in an open space?
No, the opposite, wooded areas would work, but tenuity, so woods are good, actually.
So the forest actually will deaden the noise?
Yeah, and it's not so much that the leaves and branches are blocking anything, it's a little bit of that, but it's mainly a phenomenon of ground absorption, which the ground in a forest appears like a forest, and it actually absorbs sound, yeah, too.
So that noise and die threat must have been very loud.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. So Snow and Benji Loz are witnesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Elizabeth Noonan, and I represent in Benegi. I'm here this evening with John Neill, who has been with you on this matter. Mr. Hessler, just a few questions. You've talked about the EPC contractor and your faith in fact that these contractors have to meet certain conditions, correct?
Yeah.
What does EPC stand for?
Engineering Procurement and Construction. That's who I normally work for 99% of the time, and they live in dread of missing their noise guarantees. It's a big deal.
Thank you. And your report that you provided to the town, which is dated May 26, 2016, you had the benefit of the two noise reports that were prepared along with the responses to data requests, correct?
That's correct.
And in your opinion, at that time, you did conclude at page six, that the CRUC facility will have a minimal and generally acceptable noise impact on the community so long as the overall A-weighted nighttime ordinance, noise limit of 43 DVA, more or less is maintained during all normal, non-emergency operating modes at all of the nearest residences, correct?
That's absolutely correct.
And that still is your conclusion, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any further questions?
If there are no further questions from the board, we'll present the next round of witnesses.
Thank you, sir.
Eric, please. Thank you.